Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for September 17th, 2019. A little reminder that today is Citizens Day. In 1787, Ben Franklin gave a speech and the final draft of the Constitution was signed today. And a little-known fact that today is, it used to be called Constitutional Day and it changed to Citizenship Day, so here we are today. Item number one, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections, deletions?
We have a couple items, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First of all, we will be removing item 4B2 from consent, which is the proposed name change for 128th Street. You will be seeing that in the future. And we also, as you know, we had our bond sale today, this morning, and so that updated info on 9A1 is on the dais with you now, and that's the sale of the geo-tax increment revenue bonds. And Darren will be going into that in detail when we get to that point of the program.
Thank you very much. Any others?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. Councillors?
Motion to approve agenda.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number four, consent agenda, with, they already mentioned 4B2 being off of consent.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lehman?
Is it off consent or off the agenda?
Off the agenda.
It's off totally.
Okay.
You will see it in the future.
All right.
Other changes?
Nothing, sir.
That's fine. Thank you. Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Brennan. There would be no discussion. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for September 17th of 2019. 4A1 approves the minutes from the September 3rd, 2019 meeting. 4A2 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-100, which declares the amount to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets the public hearing date for delinquent refuse bills. 4A3 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-097, which designates individuals authorized to perform certain banking transactions. 4A4 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC-101, which declares amount to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments, and sets the public hearing date for delinquent ordinance services. 4A5 approves the suspension of City Code 114.11 for a fundraising event held at Babe's, located at 124 Holm Street South, on September 21st, 2019, with a rain date of September 28th of 2019. 4B1 approves the hiring of a new building inspector, electrical, at step five of the non-union pay plan. 4C1 declares bicycles a miscellaneous property held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes its proper seller disposal. 4C2 declares four vehicles held by the police department as surplus property and authorizes their proper seller disposal. And finally, 4D1 approves the purchase of a John Deere 1570 mower from Kibble Equipment in an amount not to exceed $43,136.69.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second on the table for the consent agenda. It has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda's been approved. Moving ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name, address for the public record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we would move to item number six. There was no business removed from consent. Item number seven, I would entertain a motion for recess for the EDA meeting. Councilor Lehman?
Motion to recess the EDA meeting.
Second.
I have a second by Councilor Brennan. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. President?
Thank you. Welcome and good evening to the September 17th, 2019 Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting. Please make note of the role. Second item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and second by Contreras to approve the agenda. Any discussion? 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 All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three, consent business, which consists of the EDA minutes. Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the EDA minutes for September 3rd, 2019, on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded by Brennan for the consent business. Any discussion on that? Discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Number four, general business. 4A is the proposed 2020 EDA special benefit levy and budget. Mr. Nelson, are you presenting tonight?
I am. Thank you, President, Commission members. Before you tonight is the 2020 EDA preliminary levy. This is the preliminary one. The Commission does have an opportunity to pass this as the final one, but to kind of go near the steps of the city, we choose to do this as the preliminary levy as well. This will be the third year of the, I believe it was 18, 19, and 20, so 20 will be the third year of our separate EDA levy. We did that a couple years ago from a transparency standpoint. In the past years, we'd always transferred money from the city's general fund over to the EDA. This was a clean break in that to really show what the EDA is spending their money on and not throw it into the general city's tax levy piece of that. The EDA does have an opportunity to levy up to a small percentage of the city's market value, .0185% of the market value, which is about $892,000 is what the levy cap could be for the EDA. Tonight, we're proposing that we remain, keep the levy at $350,000, which it has been since the inception of the EDA levy in 2018. We do have a number of expenses associated with that levy. I have attached a preliminary budget at this point. We will go through the same budget steps we will with the city piece of that and really fine-tune those details when we come back in November, but for a good portion of that budget, it includes about $197,000 for wages. We do have $100,000 in there right now for the facade program. We have about $180,000, $190,000 of unencumbered funds in that facade program at this point in time, so at this point, until we delve into the details a little bit further, we are showing that $100,000 for that specific project. We can move things around or whatnot at that in regards to that as time progresses here. And then we have $25,000 for the Main Street program as well, too. So that $350,000 does a lot, but it's pretty short order to what, how it gets spread as well, too. So this levy does different than the city's levy. If a property isn't in the TIF or a tax abatement, it still gets the EDA levy, so those properties aren't exempt from this levy, so it kind of is nice to be able to kind of spread that tax burden across all taxing jurisdictions on that end of it. And it does show up on the tax statement as an other taxing line item on the property tax statement as well, too. So with that, staff is recommending keeping that levies flat at $350,000 for next year as well.
Questions of staff? Questions?
This is, I just, Mr. President, just want to make sure that this levy is flat compared to the previous year, right, for the EDA?
Yep, for the last two years, it's been, remained the same.
Mr. Lehman?
For 2018 actual, it shows $400,000 in state grants and aids and zero for 2020 or 2019.
So a lot of that, Mr. President, Commission members, is that there are some deed grants that sometimes are one-time types of things that we don't necessarily know about. I believe we had some in 2018 related to, I believe, Anchor Glass, those types of things. Those show up in there. So we don't necessarily budget for those items, but they do show up as actual activity on our, in our reports or in our financial system, so that's why it shows up in the actual column.
Okay.
Member Brennan?
Line 6430 has a $5,500 budget, and in the last couple of years, it's been zero. I'm just wondering what that is.
So that would go back to our rent discussion that we had with the preliminary levy. We went back and tied all of our rent charges to specific drivers, and personnel was one of them, and so EDA has a full-time employee plus part of our planning and development director's time is charged to the EDA as well, and so there is like one and a half FTEs in the EDA, and so those personnel are a cost driver for the rents, and so there's a rent charge within the EDA that is coming from somewhere else at this point, so that wasn't there in prior years, obviously.
Okay.
Mr. Lehman, you have a question?
Do you follow up? So they're stationed in the same city hall, and city hall already pays a building rent. Is that city hall portion then prorated down?
It would have been, yep. So we take the total expenses that we needed to be, and we divide it amongst our cost drivers, so yeah, so some other place would have seen a proportionate decrease for that,
Any other questions of staff on the proposed 2020 EDA special benefit levy and budget? Mr. Reynolds, do you have anything to add on this?
No, sir.
Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion adopting Resolution E2019-015, adopting the preliminary proposed 2020 EDA special benefit levy of $350,000 flat.
Motion by Mars, second by Contreras. Any discussion? More discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4A passes, unanimous. Item 4B is the assignment of the contract for private development for Deco Shakopee LLC to Bell Bank. Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President and board members, so last meeting, you actually assigned the development agreement to Deco Shakopee LLC. This is basically assigning that development agreement to Bell Bank. They are the construction and permanent lender on this project. Should something happen to the general partner, they need to have the ability to step in if they have to finish the project.
All right. Questions, Member Mars?
Yeah, Mr. President. Michael, so we went from Enclave to Deco Shakopee Limited Partnership, and now we're going from there to Bell Bank, right?
Mr. President, board members, so it's kind of tiered here. So Enclave and its owners are the general partners of Deco Shakopee LLC. Bell Bank, I believe it has about $13 million for a loan in this project, so as part of that, kind of the collateral is the development rights, because the city hall site is not worth $13 million, but the rights to build that building and finish it are worth that $13 million, so that value is not created until the building's finished. Our repayment of our note requires that building to be finished, so this allows the bank, should anything go wrong, to be able to step in and finish the project, because they are the main lender.
But the follow-up question, but the dollars generated are from the TIF, right? If it, that...
So, Mr. President and board members, so the way that cash flow goes is, no matter what happens, the city gets all of the TIF. This is just assigning the development rights to the project so that three-quarters of the way through, we hit a recession or something, and some other project that the partners involved in has a cash call, and they come up short, the bank can step in, because it's in their best interest to finish the project, otherwise they can't collect any rents from the project.
Well, my question is about the TIF generated off of it, that we're pledging to Bell Bank, but if...
Mr. President, you're not pledging the TIF revenues. The TIF revenues always stay with the city. What you're pledging is you have a contract for private development that will generate that TIF revenue through the development.
Right.
And they have, excuse me, they have signed an agreement with Scott County for a minimum assessment to make sure that our TIF is covered. So all of those rights that are in that contract get assigned to the bank, so should something happen, the bank still has to follow everything that's in that development agreement.
All right. Member Lehman?
Mr. President, just so I'm clear on this and put it in lay terms, if something happens with this development, the bank's going to step in and make sure the project gets completed so that it does generate tax increment.
Mr. President and board members, correct. So this is basically similar to any construction loan. The bank has basically a cure so that they can go in, otherwise they have no way to recover their money. And we want that to happen because we want our tax increment.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
The bank is collecting their payment, not from TIF, but from the rental income.
Mr. President, board members, correct. So whatever that rental income is, goes to pay down the mortgage. We separated this out, so no matter what happens, 100% of the TIF revenue comes back to the city.
Any other questions of staff? What is the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number E2019-017, providing an assignment of the Deco Shakopee LLC enclave contract for private development to Bell Bank.
Okay.
A motion and a second by Contreras. I need more discussion on this. Discussion? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one, with Lehman in dissent. Item 4C, tax increment pledge agreement for TIF District Number 18. Mr. Nelson?
Mr. President, Commission members, this is just a pledge agreement for the Canterbury Project, so the increment that's going to be generated from that is the TIF, is the EDA's TIF increment. The bond is being issued by the city. City's paying the debt service, so the EDA needs to issue a pledge agreement to the city stipulating that they will pledge those tax increment dollars that are coming in towards the city's debt service, and in lieu of that, it stipulates that the city is going to be required to, we're completing that 12th Avenue project, we are issuing the bonds and whatnot on that end of it. So it's kind of a formality deal that the EDA needs to pledge its increment that it receives for the Canterbury Project to the debt ser, the city's debt service piece of that, so.
So, Mr. Nelson, this is kind of the same way with our last item on the agenda with the bank wants to get their money, and in this case...
In this case, in this case, the EDA and the city are two separate, they're two separate entities.
Right.
And so the TIF increments coming into the, to the EDA technically, we want to make sure it goes over to the city so we can make our payments over there, so.
And then, Mr. President, then...
Questions, Mr. Mars?
And the EDA is pledging 90% of all the TIF dollars to the city to pay for the bond.
Correct.
And retain the 10%.
Correct. The EDA will retain the 10% for administration expenses that we've incurred.
Any other questions, Contreras?
I'd like to just make a motion to adopt Resolution E2019-016, authorizing execution of a tax increment pledge agreement with the city of Shakopee relating to the general obligation tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2019A, to be issued in the proposed aggregate principal amount of $4,220, right?
$220,000.
$220,000, sorry.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
A motion and a second by Brennan. Some more discussion on this. Discussion? More discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one, with Lehman in dissent. Item five on our agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to October 1st, 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second by Contreras. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please stand.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for September 17th, 2019. We have just completed our EDA portion of it, and we will move on to 9A1, award the sale of geo-tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2019A. Darren will present.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as you're aware, we had a bond sale today that closed at 10 o'clock. We had some very good rates that came in, and so this is for the 12th Avenue reconstruction piece of that project, kind of the first phase of the Canterbury redevelopment that's taking place, and so this will be repaid, this debt service with the first phase of the Doran Project. We do have with us tonight Terry Heaton from Baker Tilly, replacing Paul Steinman for tonight, stepping in, so she can go over the bond sale of that, and if there's any other questions related to the resolution, we can sure take team that and answer your questions at that point. So here's Terry. So, welcome, Terry.
Welcome.
Thank you, Darren. Mayor Mars and members of the city council, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to present the results of the sale, excuse me, the sale took place at our offices this morning on your behalf, and there's a bid tabulation that was distributed earlier this evening, and so I'll be speaking to that. The bond sale was for $4,220,000, as Mr. Nelson indicated, and we received four bids, representing with the syndicate bid, the winning bid, including them, it represents 28 financial institutions, and that's very good market representation. The low bid came from a syndicate led by Robert Baird and Company, and their true interest rate is 2.16%, and again, these are for bonds that go out to 2036, and that compares favorably about 21 basis points lower than our estimate a month ago of 2.37%. So the market came in favorably on this bond issue. The other reason you have the interest that you do in these bonds and the great rates that you received have to do with your very high credit rating, and for the members of the public, the very highest is a AAA, and just below that is a AA+. Then there's AA, couple more categories, AAA, three categories, BAAAs, triple Bs, all of those are investment grade, so you're at this very pristine, highest notch, and you have a very positive credit rating report, talks about strong management, strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, and like most of the cities in Minnesota, because we are able to issue debt, you have a weak debt category. That's because you're building infrastructure and doing all the things you can do. We also in Minnesota have some of the highest scores for maintaining our roads, streets, facilities, and so other communities are not able to do that as readily. Also, you have very strong cash and liquidity, and because of the cycle that we have where you have to hold in your fund balance at December cash to get you through the first collection of taxes, so we're also very high, which offsets the debt. So overall, they have very positive comments about the city, and so with that, we recommend the acceptance of the low bid from Robert Baird and Company at 2.16%.
Thank you. Very great rate in today's market at, overall, at 2.16 in today's marketplace is great. Thank you for that. Councilor Lehman?
I'm looking at what was on the table when we got here tonight, and it says S&amp;P rating of AA+. And did I hear you say AAA?
AAA is the very highest.
Right.
And then AA+ is one notch below that.
Yep. And we're at AA+, correct?
Right. One notch below the very highest you could get.
Okay.
Other questions? I guess I have a question. We wouldn't go and have to, we wouldn't pay for insurance on these. They're, they're AA-rated, they're considered really GOs in the end, even though it has a tax increment aspect to it. We wouldn't need to do insurance, would we?
Mr. Mayor, no. The insurers have AA+ or AAA, so you're kind of at the same rate as a lot of the insurers, and so what happens in this case is, on a general obligation bond, what they would do is calculate, the underwriter who's bidding on your bonds would calculate the cost of an insurance premium, and what they would get in reduced rates and see if it's worth it, and in this case, we didn't have any proposers, including insurance.
Other questions? Other questions? If not, thank you.
Questions of staff?
Our questions of staff?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I just want to point out that this is the bonds we're taking out for the 12th Avenue project, and all of the bond payments and things are coming from the TIF district, correct?
Correct.
Just want to make sure that taxpayers know where this money's going and where it's coming from.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Whiting, it, that is the projected piece of this, is that we've done projections on the first phase of the Doran Project, and that run that we've done, it's been conservative, and I think our estimates are that it would cover 135% to 150%. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's somewhere in that ballpark that it's projected to cover the debt service piece, so there's sufficient coverage there to make sure that that principal and interest is paid on this debt service, so, and it's strictly coming from that TIF district, which right now is basically just the Doran Phase that's going in there, and any future development in that, in that area would add to that ratio.
This, this money from this bond sale will be going for the 12th Avenue, does it go for the, all the street reconstruction in that project or just that 12th Avenue portion?
This is just the 12th Avenue piece of that. There are other areas, the Shenandoah piece of that, that's the developers doing that piece of the development right now, so that, this is paid first, so we're kind of in first order, so that we pay, we pay the city's debt service first, and then if there's, when there's remaining funds, then those funds would go to the developer at that point in time, but the city's debt service is in first place.
Other questions, comments? If not, thank you. Yeah, Councilor Whiting?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R2019-098, awarding the sale of general obligation tax increment revenue bonds, Series 2019A, in the original aggregate principal of $4,220,000, fixing their form and specification, directing their execution and delivery, providing for their payment, and authorizing the execution of documents in connection therewith.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? I was checking the markets today, and in the municipal market, this is one of the, I think the lowest was 2.15. I think that was for AAA. This is a very competitive rate. Obviously, the winning syndicate was pretty strong there. Lot of, lot of participants in their syndicate with Robert W. Baird. I don't believe that Shakopee has ever floated bonds with this low of interest rate in its history, as far as I know, and it's a very good rate on a AA+ rating from S&amp;P, and it just shows the strength of our community, and, you know, that's a great situation.
Mr. Mayor, it's good to keep that AAA bond rating credit, you know, goal.
It's still out in front of us.
It's there, so we don't have to figure a new goal.
Right. Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to 9A2, approval of the 2020-2024 Capital Improvement Plan. Darren, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
Well, Darren's getting ready, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment a little bit.
I'm sorry.
If you don't mind. This, this also is another standalone, much like the EDA levy, which three years ago, we decided for transparency purposes to carve out, so people know what we're doing on the EDA. The CIP is also a standalone that we started three years ago, once again, to make sure people understood exactly what we were doing, and it's no longer a part of the general fund as a whole. It's its own independent document, it's its own independent look that you get, not just jumbled in with the general fund. So I'm very proud of the fact that we are working and continuing to work to be a very transparent organization, and both of these financial documents that we've touched on tonight are, are just evidence of that.
And this is a, this is a plan and not, this is a plan and not a, asking of an authorization, authorization of any expenditure as we move forward. Other, the individual plans have come forward for approval.
They all will come forward for approval independently. The, the only, the thing to concentrate on is, is, you know, it's a five-year plan, but years two through five do shift with priorities over the years. The 2020 piece is really the important piece. The others are, I guess you could call them placeholders until we reach them in the budget cycle.
Thank you. Darren?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As Mr. Reynolds mentioned, this is the five-year plan, and it's, and if you look at our document, there's lots of projects in there. There's, it's, it's intensive, and there's lots of planning that takes place to, to get this document in place, and not just to do the document, but to do the projects as well, too, that take not just a year to plan, but take multiple years to plan, and then maybe potentially multiple years to actually, to incur the, the project itself. So it takes lots of planning, and having this standalone document is, is a good step in that, in making sure that our ducks are in a row, and that we're following through what we need to be. So. We do have a, a process for our projects as well, too. So we, we do rank them. So when we look at a project, we look at, you know, what is the project, what is it doing, or what does it need, what is it serving for the public? So we look at that public health and safety and mandates as kind of the top priority. So those are things that we need to do. And the second priority is to maintain and, or in efficiency purposes. So we've got investments into infrastructure. We want to make sure that we, we ensure or keep that investment that we spent money on, making sure that we do the, the things necessary. An efficiency standpoint is that updating to LED lights or something to that nature, where we can save money in the long run by spending some money on the front end. And then third priority is kind of those expanding into new systems or new services, or just general community betterment. So we kind of rank each project. It's not a scientific method of ranking. It's kind of, you know, where does it, where do we feel it falls into? But it gives us kind of a basis for, for how these projects kind of fit into the, into the system in general. We did review the, the CIP in a work session back in August, I think it was on the August 20th council meeting. We've been working on this since the spring. We've kind of put it on the, on the burner or back burner for a little while this summer as we completed the park master plan, because that had a lot of projects that then flowed into the CIP from that piece of it. So typically, we review the CIP in the middle of the summer, so usually July timeframe. We push it back to, to later in August to give us an extra month there to incorporate the parks master plan, and also the comp, the comp plan as well, too. Tonight, we'll, we're looking for the, the council to adopt the CIP, and from there, the 2020 projects that are in the CIP, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, will be brought forward into the budget. So those will, you will see again in the detailed budget when you look at that, at the work session, and also at, as you approve the budget in December. So as I mentioned, if you look at the activity. Oh, so this is your, I'm sorry. So looking at the activity of, of all, this is the total CIP across all different funds, and you can see this incorporates anything from buildings to streets to sanitary and storm, to park assets and park development and such. And you can see that for 2020, there's close to $40 million in projects that are on, that are slated to occur. These are the revenue side, this is the, this isn't the revenue side of it, this is the fund side of it, showing those, those project details. So you can see that it, it takes a lot to keep this coordinated and rolling. So if you look at that, that close to $40 million for 2020, and you look at the sources, this is the sources of all those expenditures, you can see there's, there's a lot of, a lot of cost sharing pieces in there. There's a lot of grants, there's a lot of working with other entities to make these projects happen. There aren't just tax dollars. In fact, there's probably a very small percentage of this that is tax dollars. We have a capital improvement levy, we have a park development levy that we're proposing, and then obviously, the rents from the internal service funds are quasi-tax dollars on that end of it. But there are multiple cost sharing factors, either what's the state, local, and all those types of things that really make the CIP work. So that's just to show, you know, that we have $40 million in projects, but we have, you know, a vast majority of that is some sort of cost share or grant or state aid type of, type of deal, so. So from our August workshop, there really was not a lot of changes that we incorporated into the final CIP. The one addition was a, a major addition is the Innovation Center slash Incubator Center that we've been talking a little bit about, that we have a potential for a large federal grant from that piece of it. That piece wasn't in the CIP originally. We did bring that in as a, as a project into the CIP now, just to, we have a little bit better feeling or understanding of what's, what the potential is for that project. And then basically, the other two changes were within the sewer fund, we moved some dollars from 2021 to 2020, $250,000 for sewer extension along Mayor Street, and then we added $50,000 to the 2019 prior expenses or this year's expenses for storm drainage along Highway 101, that project that's incurring some design costs at this point in time. So those are the only major changes. We will, the draft CIP is up on the city's website. Once it is approved by the council, we will place the, replace that with the final CIP. Just to reiterate, the 2020 CIP projects will be in the, in the city's budget, because the CIP is just a plan, as the mayor mentioned. And then all projects over $25,000 will be brought to, forward to the council for official approval, prior to letting any contracts at that point in time. So. So you will see a project in the CIP, you'll see that many steps along the way. So it just isn't tonight in the CIP, and it's, and it's approved and long gone. You'll see it through the budget, through the contract letting, all, all sorts of things, so. And that is all I have.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? I have a question on, uh, street maintenance and reconstruction. So as I read, I think I'm on page four here, page five, expenditure, street construction 7.8 and street reconstruction 5.6 million. Is that within the city, or is that including TIFF districts?
Mr. Mayor, council members, that does include the TIFF districts as well.
It does.
So that includes any redevelopment that's.
Okay.
Let's work down on page six.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Whiting?
I'd make a motion to adopt the 2020-2024 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Was it something that stood out?
Well, we're, we're adopting the four years, and there's many items in there that I've spoken against, so I'm trying to keep consistent. A little lofty on the park side.
Okay. For the one year, we'll see those expenses, or those.
Yeah.
Projects come back. All right. Moving ahead then to 9A3, the 2020 proposed property tax levy, general fund budget, debt levy cancellation. Darren, welcome back.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members. Before each night is the preliminary levy. It's kind of a big time of year. Usually, we don't have all these other things going on with bond sales and that kind of stuff. So usually, this is the, the main deal, but it's, it still needs to be a main deal tonight. So this presentation is very similar to the one we saw at the workshop. I'll kind of, I've shortened it a little bit, not a lot, just a little. Wanted to catch a glimpse from Mr. Reynolds at that point. So just to reiterate, when we look at our city budget, we can affect only what's in our box, quote unquote, box. And so we can't affect what the school district is doing, or what the county is doing, or what the state is mandating on, on their end of it for other jurisdictions. You know, those other, you know, Met Council, mosquito district, watersheds, all those are outside of our realm. We really can control the levy within the city piece of that. We don't have any ability to, to address valuation. That's done by the county assessor's office. And then obviously, school, county, and special districts, those taxes, those are out of our control at this point. So. Looking at our budget, we always take into consideration the, the city council's goals and their objectives. Looking at this year, we're, we're making sure that we continue to have low taxes, continued financial stability, a stable tax rate. I think this will be the third out of four years, third out of five, three out of five, four out of five, four out of five years that the tax rate will be dropping. Our increased tax capacity, and I'll go over that later, but we've had a lot of new growth, which is great, because it expands the pie and reduces that tax burden for existing taxpayers. And obviously, I didn't update our, this slide since our bond rating, but we are still working towards that AAA, and we are very close to it, and you should be very proud of where we're at, because that AA plus is a phenomenal rating. You want to have that AAA, but that AA plus, as the mayor mentioned, looking at the rates from a AAA, it was miniscule the difference on that piece of it. So it's, knowing that you're right there is, is, is a good thing as well, too. Then as Mr. Reynolds always mentions, that, you know, fiscal transparency, we were continuously working on that. We've taken steps to do that with the CIP, with the EDA levy, with, with other things, making sure that we can tell our story to the public through this budget, revising the budget over the last number of years to make it tell a story and make it readable for the average citizen to pick it up and say, hey, what's my city doing? How can I see how they're spending their tax dollars? In addition to that, we want to make sure that this budget focuses on maintaining operational service levels. It does have an infusion for tax dollars into street infrastructure. So we're looking at additional $500,000 for the capital improvement fund strictly for street improvements. We want to make sure that we're maintaining those investments that we have, so it doesn't cost us more money down the road. If we invest some now, it saves us lots down the road on that end of it. And we're also investing, recommending an investment in our, our park master plan as well, too. We had that brought forward to us in, in August, and lots of great plans and projects in there, but it takes an influx of, of cash as well, too, to make some of those things come to reality. Similar to other cities, Shakopee is experiencing budget pressures. We are a service organization, so obviously, maintaining personnel, maintaining those personnel costs, maintaining our infrastructure, they all come with, with a price. Unfortunately, we've, we've positioned ourselves good in, in the past history to take on those, those pressures, but we still are experiencing those, just as any other city is in this day and age, so. So looking at our budget impact issues, we went over in depth on these at a workshop, but wages and benefits, our contracts are up for renegotiation, our union contracts are up at the end of this year. We're at the beginning stages of those negotiations. We don't know necessarily where they're at. We've built in a certain percentage of a, of cost of living adjustment into the budget. We look at health insurance. We've had a, a good rate, or the last two years now, or this upcoming year and this current year, we've had some good premium renewals. But before that, if we recall back in 2018, we had spiked, it was 23%. I think it came in, we finally got it down to 19 or something of that nature, but those are those variables that, that change from year to year on that end of it. Then we talked a lot about our internal rent charges at a workshop as well, too. And so just to remind you, everybody on that, is that we have such a good understanding now of, of what the cost drivers are for our four internal service funds, for buildings, park assets, equipment, and our IT areas. That is a program that's set up well with the city, and, and is setting the future for the city as well, too, to, to make sure that there are funds available to replace the infrastructure that you have currently invested in. And so now that we have the cost drivers associated with those, there's a cost to get up and to fund those, but it ensures that there are funds available when a time comes to replace the, the type of assets that you need to replace. Other services and charges, where I think we're putting some additional dollars into our street maintenance for like our seal coating, that, those types of things that are under our general maintenance and not under our capital improvement fund. And then on the, on the bright side of it is that we look at our revenue forecasts, our building permits. The quantity of our building permits is unbelievable. I mean, we budget, we increased our budget 25% in 2019. We're increasing again 25% in 2020. And those are big numbers to increase a budget by. And, you know, we're, we blew out, when we set the budget last year, it made my stomach hurt that we increased our permits as high as it did, and sure enough, we hit it in May, you know, so it made me look like I had egg on my face. I'm like, well, that wasn't the historical piece of that. We haven't had numbers that, that, this high ever, and so we're sitting good, and it's, we'll be able to take advantage of that new growth as well, so.
And it's exceptionally important that we are very conservative in our resident revenue estimates. We want to always err on the side of, of, of forecasting less revenue than we, than we might ultimately get, because that's a lot easier to deal with than trying to find money.
Right. And we looked at, at the other side of the revenues, we talked a little bit about the franchise fees, the cable franchise fees. That was one area that we, we saw a decrease in in 2019, or actually, in 2018 was the first year in 10 years or ever probably that we saw a decrease in revenue. It was 6%, something to that nature, and we probably see that decreasing into the future. So we have to, to make sure that we're aware of that and, and, and take that into consideration as well, too. So. And then our capital project funds, we mentioned the, the kind of the influx of cash into the capital improvement fund for the additional levy dollars for both the capital improvement fund and the park development fund that we have now named it. So looking at our new growth over the last three years, we've increased in value $1.2 billion in three years to over $6 billion. That's, it's phenomenal. And the more phenomenal part of that is that new construction accounts for 20% of that. So the new construction piece is the piece that grows the pie, that reduces the tax burden for everybody that's already in that pie. So that's a good thing. You always want to have the new growth piece of that. If you look at the new growth just for 2019, that allows us to increase the levy $346,000 estimated, without having an effect on the current property owners. So we could raise it $346,000, and if everything else stayed the same, all values across commercial, industrial, residential, the property owners would not see, the existing property owners would not see an increase. With that, the staff is recommending increasing the city's preliminary levy to 5.98% or 1.15 million. We did discuss it, there was discussion at the budget workshop about potentially implementing the, the rent increase over two years versus one year. The resolutions I have tonight are at the original 5.98%. I didn't necessarily see concise direction there, so I want to leave it to the council to, you guys to make a formal decision on what you want to do there. But if you do decide to reduce that levy, it would be by about 100, it would be $175,000 reduction on that, 1.15 million, and that would reduce the percentage from 5.98 to 5.07, and that would save the average valued home about $8 annually. So we're not looking at a large, a large impact to a home, but it would have an impact. That deferment, though, would have an impact to next year's levy, is that if you're making the commitment to bring this over two years, now you have that $175,000 added onto your base, your starting base for next year, not accounting for anything else that we, you may or may not have increases for. So here's a breakdown of the levy. You can see the, if you look at the general fund, our operational change is 2.76%. That's less than 3%. Our COLAs are built into this budget at 3%. So you can see that obviously, there's other areas that are making up for the changes, because the taxes aren't going up 3% in the general fund. So that's accounting for, for increased revenues within building permits, within other, other areas, recreation fees, those types of charges for services that are, that are increasing and paying for more of their, their share of the, of the expenditures. So you can see the capital improvement and park development levies are increasing there, and that brings us down to the, the 1.15, which is 5.98%. And then at the bottom, I included the, the EDA levy as well, to just to give you kind of a, a citywide capture of what the taxes would be on, on that, so. So what does that mean for the average residential property? So what does that mean for the average residential property? The average valuation for properties in Shakopee increased in 2020, for taxes payable, 2020, 6.7%. So the average home went up 6.7%. 57% of those homes, of the homes within Shakopee, saw an increase of 5% to 15%. So we saw a large chunk of the city see some pretty big valuation changes. That's the demand of the free market, of what the housing prices are telling us. So that average home now went from $255,000 to $272,000. The impact of this increase will be about $39 or 4.6%. So even though the value is going up 6.7%, the increase is only 4.6%, a lot of that's attributed to that new growth piece of that. And it should be noted that last year, that same home saw about a $39 decrease as well, too. So you're kind of resetting the taxes back to the 2018 level for the most part at this point, so. And here's the breakdown of the different range of homes. And you can see, and this has been the trend for the last couple of years, is that those lower priced homes are increasing in value at a higher percentage rate than the higher priced homes. And that's just there. Again, there's a demand for that sector of homes, or that price range of homes, and it's driving up the prices on those. And here's just a chart that kind of shows three different values. You can see that kind of the average home is $44. I had in my previous chart that it was $39. Well, this is, this is not 6.7% increase, this is the whatever range that house fell in, 7.3%. So that's why that one's a little bit more at this point in time. But you can see that the more moderate priced home is $38 increase, and the higher priced home will see about a $24 a year increase. Went the wrong way. Here's our tax capacity and tax rate comparison. Here's where we've been dropping over the last number of years on that end of it. But more noticeably is that the net tax capacity piece of that is just, I mean, it's going up at a good clip, and new construction is a good portion of that as well, too. So that's good news on that end of it. And here is some information, I did not have it at our preliminary or at our workshop. These are our 10 comparable cities and where we lie within them. The average amongst these 10 cities is 5.93%. We're at 5.98% if we look at just the city levy, that piece of that. So it was interesting to see the dispersion amount this year. It was very tight, 3.65% to 8.5% last year. We led the way with the tax cut, so we were minus .3%, I think, but there was a handful of cities, at least three cities, that were 10% or greater last year, and I know some were even in 12% range. And every city has a different story each year. You never know what's going on, what's happening on a debt service side of things, or whatever projects they have going on. But here's just kind of a mark that we like to check out and just compare where we're at. And this is the general fund budget, this is just the preliminary budget. So we will be bringing back the details after the preliminary levy is approved. We'll take that, those numbers, and staff is actually working on it now to get the details, or each department is working on it, to get the details of every line item for each one of their divisions within the general fund and all of our funds at this point in time. If you look at the one item, the prior committed funds towards the bottom, bottom right-hand corner, that's $667,000. That is something new for 2020, and that's really what we're doing, is taking our excess building permit revenue that is over our budget allotment and using that for future years. So when a building permit comes in, especially for a large commercial industrial permit, that may come in in December, November, and we're doing the inspections on that for the next one, two, potentially three years down the road. And so it makes sense to make sure that the money that we receive, we have to recognize as revenue, but we want to make sure that it's committed in our fund balance. And so this will be a formal action item that the council will take in December, committing that amount, and that amount may change or may not. But I'll take a formal action to say, hey, we're going to commit these dollars for building inspection services down the road. It's in our fund balance, it's above and beyond what's in our fund balance, but those are dollars dedicated to future building inspection needs.
Counselor Lehman?
Question. Can them funds also be used for updated training pertaining to building inspections and updated equipment?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, absolutely. Anything, any building inspection related cost, basically. It doesn't have to be that it's the inspector actually at the site, it's building inspection department related cost. So if it's infrastructure, or equipment, or software, or anything like that.
Like now they've got the handheld?
Yep, absolutely, those.
What do you call them? I don't know what they call them.
Yep, yep, absolutely, so. So any more questions on that? Otherwise, that's just your updated budget calendar. So tonight is the setting of the preliminary levy. The preliminary levy is the max levy that you can levy. It can't be any higher than this. It can be lower, but it can't be higher. We will have a public budget meeting, the first meeting in December, on December 3rd, so right here at 7 o'clock, and that'll be on everybody's truth in taxation statements that come out in November. And that's what the preliminary levy is built off, is utilized to create the truth in taxation statements in November, so.
One of the important pieces here is to understand that we do something that isn't required, but frankly, both Mr. Nelson and I think are incredibly important, and that is to not take action on the same night that we hold the public hearing. That doesn't really sit well with me. I mean, if there was something that the public really had a concern with, and then we are looking to actually take action on it that same night. You know, we want to give the community the opportunity to come in and discuss the budget, and then reflect upon it, and then bring something forward at the next meeting. A lot of communities do not do that.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Couple. The debt service cancellation, can you tell us what these 2012A and 2016A bonds were?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, I apologize, I didn't touch on that. This is, we've typically done a debt cancellation resolution each year. So our 2012A is the Public Works Facility, and so we pay rents, so that facility pays rents, and so those rents go into the debt service piece of that. And so there is no need to levy debt service additional tax dollars, because we already have those dollars sitting in a fund balance. And so the county gets, when we issue debt, they get a debt schedule that shows the county what the city is supposed to levy. So they're, in order for us not to levy those amounts, we have to have a formal resolution approved by the council cancelling that levy, because we have sufficient, we have to note reasons why, and so we have sufficient fund balance in that fund. And the 2016A is the community center bond. We do an analysis on our debt service, and we have sufficient funds in there, because we levy 105%. Over time, that kind of builds up, and you actually have enough in there, so we can cancel a small portion of that, of that annual piece of that. It's not canceling the entire debt service, it's just canceling a piece of that that we don't need to levy, $120,000 of that, excuse me, of that total debt service levy for that facility.
Follow up?
Weren't them bond payments on that 2.1 or something like that?
Yep, yep, and that's all considered into this. When we look at those future debt service payments, we had that 2.2, or whatever that schedule was back on that levy piece of it, it's basically flat going out for the number of years, is that we take into consideration projected inflows and interest earnings and things like that, so. It will still remain flat from year to year.
So, Mayor, if I'm reading this right, we're going to take $300,000 out of the building fund and move it toward the 2012A, and then the difference, $239,000, is going to come out of the 212A debt service excess?
Actually, I'm sorry, that one is also, it's the Public Works Facility, but it's also a special assessment bond. I think that was a refunding one, and so we have special assessments that have come in, and so we use those special assessments to pay that other piece of that. So we have enough prepayments, or there's enough special assessments in there to pay both sides of that bond payment, so.
It's not the Public Works Building?
So it's part, it is, half of it is, and half of it's special assessment projects that were done at that point in time. And I think this was a refinancing of a previous one from earlier.
Right. So we're going to take $300,000 out of the building fund, which is the fund that we want to increase, right? We want to revise the rent charges for building, park asset, and IT.
And we have done this on a yearly basis, so we put that into the budget process, that we're taking out $300,000 of that to pay for that bond. But the Public Works Facility itself generates X amount, and so whatever that amount is, it goes into the kitty, along with all the other buildings, and then we're pulling out $300,000 of that. I would assume that the Public Works building rent is $300,000 or greater, I don't have the number offhand, but it covers that bond payment, basically.
Does it more than cover that bond payment?
I would assume it does. I don't have the number right now. I can't say it's doubled, but I can say it's $300,000. I would assume that, because that's what we would have depreciated it at, at the cost of building the building.
Still just a little bit confused.
So there was multiple bonds that we refinanced back in 2012, and so we took and commingled them into one bond, and so there's a principal and interest portion of that. Part of it is related to the Public Works Facility, part of it is related to capital improvement or street reconstruction projects that have special assessments coming from those property owners. And as those payments come in, they go into the fund, and so when we look at the fund balance itself and project principal and interest payments from here till the bond matures, we can cancel that debt service, because we have enough funds available. We don't need to levy additional funds.
Okay.
Retire that bond issue.
Right. And that's what we would do for special assessment bonds, is that we want the special assessment to pay for the principal and interest portion of that. We don't necessarily want the city's tax levy to pay for that, because we're already paying for that piece of it, so.
Do we know when that Public Works debt issue is?
I think it's 2024 or '25.
That was in '05, '06-ish?
Yeah, but you might have refinanced it in 2010.
Right.
And then it sped up, and the assessments came in and grouped together.
So 2025, so if it was a 20-year bond, that would make sense. I know it's 2025-ish, somewhere in that, give or take a year.
Next question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So if I'm understanding, the, all the new growth, we've managed to get about $350,000 worth of new tax levy.
This year.
This year.
Yep.
And then at the same time, we're increasing our budget almost fourfold from what the new tax dollars generated. So we're going from $350,000 to a little over a million?
That's correct, but understand that the, a large, large portion of that is specifically dealing with infrastructure projects.
Right.
In reality, our operations are only increasing a little over 2.5%. Everything else on top of that is infrastructure issues. And so that includes both the new program that we're putting in place, much like we did the sewers, to try to extend the life of our roads. And then it's also the other projects that we don't necessarily have a vote in, such as County Road 42 and others that we partnership with the county on. But if you're looking just at our operational levy, it's, you know, and if you weren't going to do anything with the infrastructure piece, it's a little over 2.5%.
Unfortunately, we're forced to look at all of it.
And you can say we can do it 2.5%, and we're not going to do this other stuff, then that, you know, we're going to have to find a way to
Right.
take care of our obligations that we have out there already.
Pay me now or pay me later?
And some of the things that we have, you know, we're increasing that by our decisions, whether we're buying river property and fixing it up for canoeing, projecting out a couple million dollars in Quarry Lake.
No, there's no couple million dollars for Quarry Lake. That is not correct. And this, and no, and no, and no funds from the general levy are going to purchase property. That was EDA funds, which is something separate than what we're talking about here.
The Quarry Lake, that wasn't purchased with EDA funds.
You said that there was $2 million for Quarry Lake?
The park improvement. It's a park.
I'm unaware of that.
$350,000.
Help me find that.
Right, it was in my CIP that I looked at. Anyway, there was $2 million for Huber Park, there's 10 and 1/2 for Riverbank Stabilization. There's all kinds of money that we're going to be spending.
That is money that is not as part of the 2020 budget. That is money that is part of the CIP, which we all know may or may not occur. If we have no partners, that's not happening. And so, you know, the CIP is a plan. The 2020 piece of that plan is what you need to be concerned with, because those are the ones that we're looking forward, and that we are planning at this point to implement in 2020.
Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, this is the 2020 preliminary budget and levy, and to that I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R2019-102 and R2019-103, setting the proposed maximum 2019 property tax levy collectible in 2020, and canceling certain debt services levies for taxes payable in 2020.
Second?
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Contreras. Discussion, I guess, Darren, I just had one last question in regard to, I appreciate our comparable cities. That is great. I have a little wider scope here. Eagan at 7.9, these are preliminary only. Lakeville 7.7, and did you have a comment in regard to your next employer at 7.5 on a preliminary levy?
You certainly can afford his wages.
Is that they're adding some new employees, are they?
No comment.
So I look at this, and then I wanted to ask the council, now that we have a motion on the table, there was discussion at our workshop in regard to splitting the, splitting the IT and revised park asset and building fund over two years. It's $175,000 split. It does help out in big picture. If we were to build enough consensus to do it, it, you know, certainly something that will be our additional mark next year as well. So because this does have to get done, I had discussion with staff on it, and we can do it all at once or split it, but Counselor Whiting?
You know, I had talked about that, too, and thought it was a good idea, after thinking about it, you know, and then basically just extending the life of that need. I think, I've changed my mind on that. I'd like to get it done now.
I think, I think that...
I'm in favor of splitting it. I'm in favor of, you know, when I look at a lot of what we've got going on the next four years, it's, and I've said this many years in the past, so it's not just now. It's, you build a lot of stuff into it these two years, and if you look out the next couple of years, it's down, and it would be a lot easier if we could balance that out. Instead of having $2 million worth of road improvements this year and $500,000 three years from now, it's much easier to have a straight line, or close to a straight line, where you have $800,000, $800,000, or something like that. But we're starting to get into the, let's ramp up, let's drop down, let's ramp up.
I'm aware of that. I think that some of these things may have been the push in the previous years that we didn't do, and now it's catch up. There's been some new areas identified, at least for some roads, where we had an all-out failure this year. Looking at trying to work on that, that area up there to improve those roads, which I don't believe was on the CIP aspect of it for 2020 to begin with, but Counselor Brennan?
I'm going back to the, I would rather pay, have the total amount on the current year budget and not break it up over two years. I would just have it, rather have it off and not carry over, so that we're not starting out with $175,000 for next year.
Counselor Whiting?
Just a little follow-up. I, that thought about that road failure on the upper part of town was that, you know, $2 million this year and $500,000 next year turns into $700,000 or $800,000 next year, because there's always going to be something that needs to be added on. So if we need it now, let's get it done now, because we know it might not be as much of a drop-off next year. You just don't know.
Further discussion on our preliminary property tax levy, general fund, and debt levy cancellation. Counselor Lehman?
This comes back, where was that scheduled again?
It wasn't here, it was on the display.
September 3rd, September 3rd, I think. Well, actually, it goes to the public in September, October, where was it?
So we're at September 17th. We'll be certifying the max on the 30th, get some information from the county, public meeting. We'll have a workshop on... I will have a workshop on in November, and then December third, hold a public meeting. December seventeenth, adopt the final tax levy and budget.
So we just don't have the actual public meeting on this document?
Uh, December third, public meeting.
I mean, where you get together with the general public and talk about it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, we, Mr. Reynolds and I had those kind of kickoff meetings um, earlier this summer in the end of May, first part of June, where we. Try to advertise my, advertise that and try to get the public's input as much as we can.
So this will be coming back. Will we be doing anything to try to lower this budget at all between now and adoption?
We'll, we're going to be looking at all the line items that go into that budget, and so um, we take it through with a fine-tooth comb and and do our best to.
And I think on the August twentieth.
Be cognizant.
Our workshop there, I think that you had to leave, and you said you were going to send in your comments to staff, so.
A lot of my comments have been made throughout the process, so they're not unknown.
No, okay.
Counselor Whiting?
In this part of the process, it's adopting that maximum levy. So we can go down at the next meeting, but this is the top.
Yeah, and that's correct. And this is, this has the, we're making some assumptions when it comes to our operational expenses. That yet has to go through our department heads and through the various. Parts of their organizations, and our initial assessment is once again, you know, is a little over two and a half percent operationally, which by the way, is just unbelievably outstanding. The the, everything else on top of that is specifically dealing with infrastructure. And uh, you know, Mayor Morris touched on it. We, we have some roads that were improperly constructed. When 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 development was first put in, and those roads are failing. And we can ignore that, but uh, I don't think that your residents that live on those roads are really going to be happy with us just kind of closing our eyes and not not addressing them.
I think I would rather have, I'd rather say that they were built to a different standard than we, what we would use today, instead of saying they were improper.
No, that's incorrect. That's incorrect. They were, they were improperly constructed based upon the soils, and Steve will be more than happy to sit down with you, Counselor Lehman, and explain that to you.
Who built these roads?
Steve, do you know, uh?
Uh, mayor and council members, um, the developer coordinated and built them as part of their project. Um, for the, for the two developments and development area that we're talking about.
Did the city inspect them? Call a question. Did, did the city give a design standard?
Um, mayor and council members, um, I wasn't here. I would assume that the city was involved, yes.
Motion on the table with a second, uh, on the um, levy. General fund debt levy cancellation. Um, no further discussion. The question's been called. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving ahead then to ninety-four, EDA special levy and preliminary budget for two thousand nineteen. Darren, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is the item that the, you saw in the EDA uh, meeting, and it just needs the the council's EDA approved it. Now the council needs approval so we can officially send that to the county, so there's no, I have no presentation other than. I see on the agenda that it references resolutions twenty eighteen. Um, it's actually resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero nine nine, so. Those were last year's resolution numbers.
This is the same that we saw on the EDA. No other changes. We're bringing it forward to the council. Counselor Brennan?
I make a motion to adopt resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero nine nine consenting to the Economic Development Authority in and for the city of Shakopee. Adopting a proposed special benefit levy of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars collectible in twenty twenty.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's move ahead then to ninety-five, strategic planning, environmental scan and schedule need. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. See if I can pull this up.
How many slides?
I had a bit of a struggle with this and kept it to nineteen, I think, so. It was up to fifty for a period of time, but I I brought it down a little bit. All right, so today my goals for this presentation are, um, you know, first to kind of give you an overview of the plan relative to strategic planning and how we're going to go about it. I know that you've all received a link to do a SWOT questionnaire. Uh, if you still haven't done that, you can do it until ten AM tomorrow morning.
Ten AM tomorrow. If you have not done it, do it.
Um, but then I'll talk about dates towards the end here. Um, talk a little bit about what strategic planning is, what it isn't, um, and kind of how it fits into the bigger picture. And then, um, then I'm going to go through some data that we're calling an environmental scan, and. Truthfully, my hope is what's going to happen is that it's gonna, it's gonna spark some questions within you. It was kind of a struggle for me to kind of go through and try and find things that I thought were interesting. But really, this is just a beginning. This is some stuff that is intended to give you some ideas. Um, and you'll notice in the presentation here, which we'll email to you tomorrow. There are a couple of questions that maybe are something that you you want us to dig into further, or just things for you to think about as we're moving forward in the strategic planning process.
And the point being is that, you know, we're not expecting, you know, a litany of questions tonight. We want you to take back, think about it, review. The presentation. It's very heavy with facts, figures. Uh, and uh, ruminate on it a little bit, and uh, and then hopefully come forward at our next session with some good discussion questions that we can then follow up on.
Yeah, and if you want to come have a cup of coffee and discuss data with me and Bill, I mean, we'll have a great time doing that. And all of my colleagues in the room, if I'm talking about something relative to something you know about, I think you should just feel free to jump on in if you want to offer something up. So a strategic plan is really the intersection between our aspirational, which are visionary plans, and the comprehensive, which would be your comprehensive plan, the Parks Master Plan, other things like that, and the operational, which is budget and tactical planning. Just so you're aware, our comprehensive plan has over four hundred and forty-five strategies. Um, I have them all in an Excel spreadsheet, but as you can imagine, that's a lot to bite off, right? I mean, if all four hundred and forty-five things in the comp plan, all two hundred things in the Parks Master Plan are priorities, then absolutely nothing's a priority. We need to figure out what those things are that we're going to focus on in the next two to five years, and that's what strategic planning is about. It's going to help us develop a shared language around strategy. Uh, the language that the consultant that we're bringing in uses is priority outcome. K O I, which is your um, indicator, your measures. Targets, which would be the, what you want the measure to do, and initiative, which is kind of the project that moves the needle. You'll learn a lot more about that during your session on the twenty-fifth. Uh, but really what this is about is taking everything that we have, that we spent years now putting together that's visionary, and turning it into something that's actionable and measurable. Remember when we first started this conversation, um, a lot of conversation about uh, how the council really got the chance to say, this is the direction we're going, and then hold us accountable for executing. So that, this is where that uh, that rubber really starts to meet the road. So where we are today is we're scanning the environment, we're working on that SWOT analysis, um, we're developing a strategic profile. Um, and we're identifying strategic challenges. So all of that information, today is the primarily that environmental scan. All of that other stuff will come together on the twenty-fifth when Craig Rap, our consultant, is here. On the twenty-fifth and the thirtieth of this month, um, the things that are in the second column there, where you're going, defining the mission, values, vision, establishing the goals, and identifying key intended outcomes. Those are pretty much the things that we're going to focus on in those first two sessions. There's still more work to do as we move forward, but this is a big step in the right direction. So right now, I just kind of wanted to make sure you're aware, um, we, we have a mission and vision, but it's kind of consolidated. And we have some values. The fire department has some, the police department has some, we have some in personnel policy. The consultant's going to ask you to consider what you think our mission, vision, and value should be. Um, when you do get this, it'll come in electronic format. I'm probably going to add a few more links in the right-hand corner here. The Baldridge stuff that I've been working on for the last year has a lot of really good information related to values. But we do need to separate out that vision and mission, um, and we do need to have something that's memorable. And frankly, if you Google live, work, play, uh, there are at least seven hundred different communities throughout the nation that use that exact same thing. Uh, there is no differentiation between Shakopee and any number of those communities. Uh, in fact, the entire state of Georgia uses live, work, play as a thing that they do, so.
Registered that thing.
My, I mean, this is kind of the big overarching thing. You are going to be asked to evaluate whether or not we need to redo our vision, our mission, and our values. And I would say, if you look at our comprehensive plan, um, and you look at some of the strategic planning, comprehensive planning that was done, say, in the early two thousands, there are a lot of things that have changed. And that's kind of where we get into this. Um, I'm not going to talk too much about it, but you can see, um, we're growing, and we're going to continue to grow, and I don't think that there's not, I don't think that there's much. Uh, we could slow it down potentially a little bit. Don't know that that's necessarily what you want to do. But given the number of housing starts that we have going on, housing in the pipeline, I'm actually going to guess, and I don't know if Mr. Kurski agrees with me, that this happens faster. I think that we're probably ahead of our twenty twenty projection within a year or so. Fifty percent of our pop, just one thing I thought was, that was interesting, was fifty percent of our population has lived here less than ten years. So about twenty-four, twenty-three thousand people that live in this community have lived here for less than ten years, and seventy-five percent have lived, lived here for less than twenty years. Seventy-seven percent of our residents intend to remain here for at least the next five, and eighty percent are likely to recommend Shakopee to a friend, which comes from the community survey. But that also ranks about fifteenth out of sixteen, so we need to do better on that front. Age, race, and ethnicity, this is a issue that's near and dear to my heart, um, but. Shakopee is a somewhat younger community. We have a median age of thirty-four compared to thirty-six in the metro. And that might not sound like a big deal, but it really is. When you're talking about half of our people fall under the age of thirty-four versus in the rest of the metro area, half of the people fall under the age thirty-six. It actually means that we have a fairly large population of people under the age, uh, under the average age of the metro area. Um, and folks that are younger have somewhat different needs, and you might be able to think of what those are. Uh, newer Shakopee residents tend to be families, and they are approximately forty to fifty percent non-white. So those folks that have moved in the last five years or so, they are between forty and fifty percent non-white. Thirty percent of the community right now overall is non-white. And uh, forty percent of the school district are students of color. So you have to imagine that over the course of the next couple of years, we are going to gradually become more and more non-white. We're going to become more racially and ethnically diverse. And I think you need to think about what the demands are going to be and what's going to change as we start to move towards that tipping point. Where more and more folks have different cultural backgrounds, have different ideas about what a community should be. How are we going to accommodate that? What programming and services or infrastructure might, we need to consider changing in order to make this a welcoming community for everybody? Income and education, I'm not going to go through this in too much depth. Um, eighty percent of households in the last community survey had kind of a. Positive outlook about how the economy was going to impact them. For me, some of the more interesting stuff in this information is we have, we have similar rates of education among our residents, but we have higher per capita and median incomes. And I guess I was, I kind of wondered why that is. But we have a similar education, but higher incomes. So there's something that's going right in that way. And why is our median household income thirty-two percent higher than the state, but our per capita income is only three percent higher? And I think I have the answer to that after I started thinking about it. Because our average household is about point three percent higher. So an average household in the metro area is two point five people. An average household in the city of Shakopee is two point eight people. Isn't that, is that the correct number?
Yeah.
Employment, fifty-six percent rate employment opportunities favorably in the city of Shakopee, and sixty percent rate Shakopee as a favorable place to work. But here again, that issue of the number of people that are commuting into Shakopee and the number of people that are commuting out of Shakopee continues to be disparate from the rest of the metro area. So what are the reasons that people are either commuting in or commuting out? And what does that do to services demands within the community? What do we need to take a look at? How do we need to adjust? Housing, seventy-four percent of residents reported that they're not under housing stress. Uh, sixty-one percent rated housing options favorably, but that's eleventh out of twelfth in the metro area, as far as those that have taken the survey. More and more housing units being offered, both new and pre-owned, are greater than two hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is kind of the baseline for quote affordability, based on our median incomes. So our median income is roughly eighty thousand per year per household. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand therefore is kind of the baseline for what affordable um, would be. And we really don't have any. As you just saw in Darren's presentation, um, the average home value in this community just moved up to about two hundred and seventy-five. So we're kind of starting to see a little bit of a strange counterbalance happening where our housing is becoming unaffordable for our median incomes. Does that make sense? So what are the questions? I mean, the big question for me is, what's going to happen? What are the, what are the impacts on city services and how do demands change? On our programs and our infrastructure when residents are under higher housing stress, higher, higher housing cost stress? Uh, I can think of a couple of things that might adjust, and what's that going to do to city finances in the long run when residents are under cost, our housing cost stress? Uh, briefly, I'm not going to touch on all of these things. Again, you'll get this in your email, um, but community safety, we've been over it a little bit. I think that we all believe that there's a perception issue here because we can pull data that actually specifically says that we are a safe community compared to others. Ninety-two percent say prioritizing community safety uh, is either essential or very important, which is something I don't think we've talked about before. Overall, we have decent ratings, but I think in comparison to other communities, we should be better. What does safety mean to the average person in the community? I, I've come to that question a lot of times. Does it mean that I feel safe? Does it mean that I am safe? And how do we help advance the perception, right, that that, that the community is safe? Uh, but these are all, you know, data points relative to that, and and I will say that. Um, it's pretty clear that community safety is the highest priority for the community if you look at the community survey. Overall economic health, eighty, eighty-six percent of people say prioritizing overall economic health is essential or very important. Um, and that breaks out pretty po, pretty highly as well. Here again, we have about eighty-four thousand dollar median income. I reiterate that we have a lot of people that commute out. Sixty-four percent feel positively about the economic development of the community. But overall, you can kind of just see some pieces here, and I guess my big question relative to this is how much influence does the city have? On these overall economic health indicators, and what can we do to move that needle in the right direction? Overall quality of natural resources, eighty percent of people said that prioritizing that was either essential or very important, and I was a little bit surprised. And truthfully, I'm a little bit, I wonder what that means to people, right? What is, what do they mean when they say that? Prioritizing the quality of natural resources is important. Is it that they expect open spaces? Is it that they expect that the city is taking steps to ensure that we have clean air and water? Is it uh, relative to the total amount of parkland, recycling, garbage? Let's not talk about garbage. I'm not in the mood for that. And I'm just wondering, you know, I think we need to figure out what it is that residents are expecting relative to natural resources. Because it, it clearly comes out as a fairly high priority for people. Uh, health and wellness proper opportunities, seventy-nine percent say prioritizing that is essential or very important. Uh, we saw in the Parks Master Plan that the younger generations, the millennials and the generations following behind, place even more and more emphasis on wanting the community to provide. I won't say opportunities, but make sure, make it possible to. community to provide, I won't say opportunities, but make, make it possible to engage in health and wellness, whether that's trails, parks, community centers, et cetera. The younger generations tend to want those things. Overall, we're rated 79% positive on our city parks, 70% positive on our quality of our recreation programs. This is one area where we did improve. If you remember, the overall quality of the community center went up about 10 percentage points in terms of positive perceptions. But I think that you need to connect this back to, what are the demands going to be as, as we get more people who are more likely, more than likely younger, coming into the community? And, and how are we going to respond to that? The quality of the built environment, this is a big question. On the survey, it said built environment was everything from development to parks to streets. So I didn't do a whole lot with this one, but it was the next level priority. Seventy-six percent saying prioritizing that was either essential or very important. You can see the overall positive ratings. To me, I think most folks probably thought about the built environment in terms of transportation. We got 75% positive overall ratings for ease of getting around, 71% positive for availability of paths and trails, 80% positive for travel by car. And I asked Steve this evening for a, an additional metric, and with about two-thirds of our streets evaluated, our average pavement index is just below 70, and I'm presuming that scales between zero and 100. So. You can kind of see, you know, what's going to, what's going to happen with regard to our transportation system as the city grows and develops? I specifically wonder what that's going to do from both a financial and an operational impact. You know, for every X mile of streets, we have to add another plow. Do you have that number right offhand, Steve? So I also wonder about public transit and whether or not we, if public transit was more available or easier to access, more convenient, more robust, if we could get more cars off the road, and that would solve a portion of the 169 problem. I just think these, you know, like, these are just things that I'm wondering about, and I'm hoping are going to spur questions for you. Sense of community, this is a big one. This is something that I've heard, actually, if you don't know, today is my three-year anniversary with the city. In all three years, I've talked, I've heard a lot about the small-town feel. It's something that people talk about. It's something that people appreciate. But I keep on asking myself what that means. So we put that into the community survey to ask, what does it mean? And I put the actual result on the lower part of this. And you can see, the biggest thing is, you know, safety and walkable neighborhoods and knowing and being friendly with your neighbors. And so to me, sense of community and the idea of small-town feel are inextricably intertwined. They are, they are together. And 75% of the people said sense of community is very important or essential. I think that if, if small-town feel is something that, that this community wants to maintain, we need to figure out what that actually means and work towards it, as opposed to kind of have it be this nebulous idea. Because it's, it's difficult to maintain, quote, "small-town feel" when we haven't really talked about what that means. Fiscal stewardship, this is one that, again, you know, Darren just went through a lot on this. I put the tax levies and tax capacity. Forty-three percent positive rating for value of services for taxes paid. That was actually relatively low in comparison to other communities. And then 42% felt positively about the cost of living in Shakopee. Questions that I have to this are, what's the relationship, if any, between low taxes and excellent or good value? One of the things that I say amongst the staff is that, and I, I appreciate low taxes, but I, I don't agree with it as a goal. I don't agree with it as a goal, because low taxes isn't always exactly the right thing. If I came to you and I said, "Well, if we could raise the levy by $100,000, add another police officer, and decrease the likelihood of violent crime by X percentage," I think you have to have a conversation about reasonable trade-offs as opposed to, quote, "low taxes." And that's just my opinion. I think that low taxes are a good thing, but I think that we should be talking more about fiscal stewardship. And to me, that means, if you look at our last bond rating, we are doing all of the things that we're supposed to do in order to make sure that we are using public funds appropriately. So I think low taxes is in there, but I don't think that that should be the singular only focus. And then overall organizational excellence, 47% positive overall confidence in Shakopee government, 81% positive overall customer service by Shakopee. And if you remember, this is one that we increased by about 10% between the last two years.
Thank you.
Seventy-two percent positive employee engagement. This is a survey that we did a couple of months ago amongst our staff, and we're 20 or 30% higher on average than other organizations. 65% people ranked us positively on overall public information services. So those are just a couple of points relative to organizational excellence that I thought were important. But really, what it comes to is, how important is our trained, prepared, and equipped workforce? So, like I said, tomorrow, we'll send out that presentation. You can review it. You can call, email, ask questions. If you want us to dig up other information, that's always easy to do, especially for me, since I have a lot of it sitting there that I didn't put into this presentation. Tomorrow, again, if you finish that SWOT analysis survey by 10:00 AM, that'd be great. On September 25th, we have Strategic Planning Retreat 1. On September 30th, Strategic Planning Retreat 2. And then by about 11:05, November 5th, we should be presenting the draft of the strategic plan to council. That's all I have.
Your presentation was packed full of great information and get your, get you thinking about things. You'll email that out to us?
Yes.
All right. Questions? Other questions? All right. So thank you very much, and we'll look forward to this next Wednesday.
And quite literally, we have just tons of more data. As Nate was saying, I mean, he really did have 50 slides earlier. And if, you know, as we go through this process, if there's any particular area that you have questions, concerns, or want more data, and chances are pretty good, we've got it.
Right.
So feel free to contact us and let us know, and we'll dive deep on a particular area and then send that information out as well.
Do we know how many were surveyed and when they, timeline that the survey took?
Yeah, we've got all that.
Do you happen to know that now?
Nate?
Yes, the, the survey took place between about the first of January and the end of January. We got 440 responses on the paper surveys and another 400 responses on online surveys. Interesting, I like having them separate, because I can actually go through and compare, and they kind of validate each other. And you get similar responses between the paper survey and the online survey, and you know that you're kind of on track. But statistically speaking, all of those percentages are plus or minus 5% with a 95% confidence ratio, so.
And then our surveys are incorporated into that?
Most of the data that I just presented came straight out of the community survey that we did earlier this year.
Okay, so we're supposed to do this by 10 o'clock tomorrow. I already did mine.
Okay, that, yeah, so that was just the SWOT analysis. This data was really just intended to give you kind of a baseline data analysis, and then, again, to spur questions. The SWOT is actually different and distinct from what I just presented. All pieces work towards putting together the strategic plan, but you didn't need what we just did to do the SWOT, so.
Everybody on the same page? All right. Thank you. 96 then, financial review. Darren, welcome.
And this will be Mr. Nelson's final financial review, and actually, pretty much the final thing that he has on the agenda. And that's, that's, that's a milestone. As we all know, Mr. Nelson is leaving us. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank him publicly again for all the hard work that he has done in this community and for the community. And what, what you, in a partnership with me, were able to accomplish, I kind of had this nebulous vision of, as to what I wanted to try to achieve, and you were incredible to help refine that and actually make it something that made a difference and impact in residents' lives. And a lot of people won't understand that. They won't understand some of the things that, that we've done in regards to transparency and other things. But Mr. Nelson, it's been my distinct honor and a pleasure, and I want to just publicly thank you for all of your hard work. You have done a tremendous job for this organization and this city, and we're damn really going to miss you. So thank you very much, sir.
Well said. Thank you for those words. I appreciate my time here, and it's been my pleasure, and it's... I don't know what to say. Thank you.
When, before you came on board, Mr. Reynolds says he wanted a finance director he could have in a headlock like this.
Right.
And I don't think he meant literally, but he, he wanted a team member, and it sounds like you, and I know you guys worked out well together, and I appreciate all you've done for the community.
Right. I know how to switch that around and get him to fold Nelson, so I... And thank you for not putting this on the consent tonight, because I do have, just the one up Nate one last time, I have 20 slides to present tonight instead of 18, so.
Great.
You'll have to, you have to find a different punching bag for that one, so. But overall, just seriousness, thank you again for everything. It's been my pleasure. Looking at your general fund, it's, your revenues are phenomenal, again. Obviously, your taxes, that's a line item you get twice a year. We've gone over that many times on that end of it. That'll be fine by the end of, end of the year. Licenses and permits, 193%. That's, that's volume. It's not the price of the permits, it's the volume of the permits coming in. And that's the part, I got thinking when I sat back down after the budget presentation, is that we showed in the budget that we had 667,000, that wasn't the kind of dedicated or committed funds for next year. Those are just the ones that were committed for 2020. We're actually going to be committing like 1.5 million, or whatever that surplus is that we, that we have. So we're going to commit more than 600 and some thousand dollars. We're going to just use 600,000 dollars for next year's budget. We're going to have left over a million dollars plus probably at, at that point in time. So we'll be able to fund that ongoing for the next couple of years on that, and see how next year goes and such, so. Intergovernmental revenue, that's all kind of trending in the right direction there. We'll get our state aid in October. October 1st, we'll get police and fire state aid. We'll get some additional MSA dollars towards the end of the year and such like that. Everything's, everything's looking up and up at that point in time. So through August, we should be at about 60, 66%. So we're right on that, that target base, even with taxes being your biggest outlier there at this point, so.
All right, culture, Alan.
What's the scoop with the special assessments being red arrow 171%?
So the special assessments is directly related to the garbage assessments, and so with our contract with Republic, we guarantee the payments. And so any delinquent payments, the city collects that via our special assessment. So at the end of the year, we shore up with, with Republic and says, "Okay, we have X number of dollars of delinquent special assessments." The city cuts a check to shore them up. We then recoup that through special assessments, so we recoup that over a year timeframe. So we got the first half tax payment in June. We'll get the second half payment in December, which, which should shore it up to zero. So basically, we wanted that one at zero. So that, that one's negative throughout the whole year, because we have the upfront payment to Republic at the beginning.
Really only get two payments a year on, into that.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, first half, second half. Got it, yep.
Any questions on the revenues? Otherwise, we'll move to the expenditures, which are pretty vanilla. Everything's, like you said, the, the 66% is kind of the benchmark. Every department's kind of within that 10% plus or minus range. I had to do a little finagling to get the finance arrow into, to level it off this month, but it all worked out. We obviously are keeping an eye on, you know, we've mentioned this over the course of this year, because we had a, a super-long winter and spring that never happened, but our street maintenance division, that's an area that we had excess salt usage, overtime, that type of thing. So that's an item that we're looking at. When we come back and look at the 2019 revised budget, we'll, we'll look at that and see where we're projecting that to...
You changed the color on line item 15?
Yep, I did. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so everything within the general fund there, obviously, you're, you're sitting right at budget rate, just below the, the target, so that's, that's good, so. Nothing there? We'll move on to recreation area. Let me just make this a little bigger here. All right. Looking at, here we have Sand Venture, Ice Arena, and Community Center. Looking at Sand Venture, season of that is over with, obviously. That's been closed now for a couple of weeks, since about mid-August or so. Revenues, we came in slightly over of what we did last year. I suppose every year kind of weighs itself out, but this year's spring wasn't very good either. We talked about the long winter and bad spring. Well, June wasn't a very good month either. I don't think summer really started until about the 4th of July, so. So it's nice to see that we had exceptional revenues on that end of it. The wages and benefits, they're higher than last year. I do have a note in the council memo that we noticed last year that there were some wages that weren't being charged, that were being charged at the community center and not the Sand Venture, and so we did a journal entry in September to move those. And so next month's financial report, you'll see the 2018 number more accurately reflect the similar number to 2019 at that point in time, so. Looking at the operating expenditures to a Sand Venture, it still will have expenditures now through the end of the year. Our rent charges that we charge it are done throughout every month, not just the months that it's open. There'll be some utility charges that occur, those are kind of building arrears, and so they'll be catching up on that. So our expenditures will still continue to rise on that end of it. So it's not, even though the operations are done, the fiscal year of it is not quite complete at this point. Ice Arena revenues are pretty much on track where they were last year, just a slight dip, but that can be all at the timing, because this is really just a snapshot in time. So give or take one payment, you never know what, what is in or is not in at that point in time. Wages and benefits are very similar to last year. Where are my notes? Expenditures are a little bit higher. We had a little bit, we had a smaller one-time purchase for a floor cleaning machine that will, in 2019, which should help offset some additional contracted services for cleaning. So we're doing that with our staff now versus contracted services. So those should help even themselves out by the end of the year. But overall, expenditures for the Ice Arena are at 61% versus that target of 66%. So we're, we're under at that, this point in time. We'll be ramping up for the, the busy season starts now, September timeframe, for their kind of second half of the, of the season. So we're expect our expenditures to kind of reflect that as well, at that point in time as well, too. Community Center, your revenues are really good. They're 88% of your budget through August. That's, that's really good. So that helps offset some of those additional costs associated with operating that, those facilities. And so we've seen a good, a good number of that now, since that operation has been open for the last two and a half, two and a half, three years or so, two years. You know, we've seen a, a good increase in the revenues, and so we hope to continue that trend as well, so. Expenditures are a little bit higher. We're offering a lot of programs. We're fully staffed now on our, within our kind of pool area with our lifeguards and, and that type of thing. I think we have a, a good basis now for what our staffing needs are in there, and we're, and we're fully staffed. And the operational expenditures are up as well, but that, part of that is due to the rents with the community center coming on with the additional amount compared to 2018 and 2019 on that end of it, so. But overall, the community center's at 68%, so we're still right in that ballpark of that 66% mark, so nothing to be terribly alarmed at, especially when your revenues are as strong as they are at that point, so. Then finally, the deferred revenues are very similar to where they are this time last year. And there again, those deferred revenues are annual memberships that are purchased. We're recognizing 1/12 of that membership over time, rather than purchasing that membership in December and recognizing all that revenue right then and there, when that... in December and recognizing all that revenue right then and there when that member gets to actually utilize that membership for the next 12 months. So this utilizes that revenue recognition piece of it, so. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have.
Questions of Darren? Questions of Darren? If not, I just, Darren, thank you for your tenure here at the City of Shakopee. I believe strongly that you've left Shakopee in a better place than when you found it. I appreciate that and value that. I stopped at your office last week, and we talked. You bring a lot of integrity to the office. We're sad to lose you. Good luck at Minnetonka. I know their levy's going way up. Try to work on that. I think also part of the thing that you've brought to the table is to be able to talk financial conversation in a plain speak for the council, for the residents. I think you have a great way about yourself to be able to talk like that. I ran into the previous long-term finance director, and he used to be a yes and no guy. You'd have to ask him a question in the yes or no, and then it was really even hard for him to get out an answer that way, and he was telling me that, "Well, you needed to ask the question the right way." Well, it'd take me 10 questions to actually dial it down, but I want to thank you, and I think the citizens of Shakopee have done well in your tenure in our finance department. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I, I mean, it's truly due to, I mean, the support of the whole city, the support of the council and the mayor, support of my staff. My staff is phenomenal. They make me look good up here. As much as I make myself not look so good, they do what they can to provide me the information to help make that story be told, so. Thank you to teach everyone of you, and I appreciate those kind words.
Counselor Lehman?
Darren, my voting record shows that I voted against you leaving, so it's on record.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. All right, moving ahead then. 10A, our city bill list is in front of us for our review, and then we would move to 10B, Liaison and Administration Report. Counselor Brennan?
Yep, I had three scale meetings in the last couple of weeks. The first one was the executive meeting, or executive board meeting, and they're starting to talk about the 2020 legislative goals, not anywhere close to being done yet. We also had the general committee meeting, and one of the things that was presented was the public nuisance ordinance that the Scott County will be looking at, and then it'll be coming to us to, I think, approve or adopt, or whatever the right word is. And it's on public health, so it'd be like infestation, garbage, things that are really out of the ordinary and extreme, so we'll be seeing that again. And then the RTF meeting was also held, and they talked about Valley Fair. Valley Fair rents out dorm space at the RTF. They had about 25 residents. They billed the residents a total of $12,600, and they feel that they made $10,000 total. They have a resident that, a person that is there in the building that watches things and how it goes. And they said that one of the issues that they have is that there's no, Valley Fair doesn't provide busing or transportation to Valley Fair, so a lot of those people are there, and they have to find their own way to get to work. So, but they feel that is beneficial, and they'll be looking at that again for next year. The roof replacement is complete, and it came under about $9,000 under budget, and the boiler installation was just started, and I think they are planning that that's coming under $70,000 under budget. I think that's it on that. They have public, open, public shoot dates at the public, regional public safety facility. One is in October and one is in November, so if somebody wants more information on that, they can look up Scott County and the regional public safety facility and get more information on that. I went to the Amazon ribbon cutting and tour. Amazon donated $25,000 to the school district, and I also went to the Canterbury and United Properties Open House on Friday, and they gave us an update on what's going on in the development in the area. And then Crime Prevention, Inc., go to those meetings, and they are going to have a paper shredding event on Saturday, October 21st, from 10 to 2, and that will be outside here at the police station. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
The cost of the paper shredding, you know?
Free.
It's free?
Mm-hmm.
How big of a truck can I bring?
I think there was like so many banker boxes that were allowed, yeah, it was an old truck full.
All right. The utilities last night, let's see here. Valley View Water Main is completed. Windermere South Water is done. Parametos's Water is done, and the water, 2040 Water Plan shows a need for 1 million gallons of water in the second high elevation in two tanks. They approved the one tank now, it's going to be a 750,000-gallon tank. That was before the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And they picked out the design, what do they call it, Sphere or something or other? The one that has the tower with the ball on top. It's about a two-year build-out from the manufacturer, so they're shooting for, I think it was an October completion.
They have a site?
Yeah, it's the Latour property out southwest minister. It's the highest point between here and Louisville. It's one of the highest points, which lowers the height of the tower to get the water pressure. Total is off the ground 125 foot in height. They had two power outages. One was two customers, Suicide Squirrel. One was a tree branch from the wind and the rain. That was one customer. Doran is fully powered now. All their transformers are powered up. And the other issue that was talked about was they did a water looping for RAR's warehouse on the north side of 101, up underneath the tracks, and the rock was just unbelievable. It was estimated by the consultants, WSB, to be 80 cubic yards, and it turned out to be, I don't know, 800 or something.
Bedrock?
Yeah. So substantial extra cost, hundreds of thousands, and one of the things that they were talking about, and I talked about with them at the same time, kind of got into a conversation, was a policy based on a geographic area where there's known bedrock close to the surface. We know we're going to have some redevelopment downtown. We know pretty much where that is in town for the most part, and Spock commissioners, you know, really would like to utilize our staff's knowledge in this area, too, so that when they do do a water issue or whatever, infrastructure in them areas, they can design a contract language that has that known, I guess, for whoever's bidding on it or consulting working on it or whatever, so that the bedrock issue doesn't, isn't an issue for the city or the utility on some of these projects in them known areas, so. I'm sure their staff will probably be contacting our staff. And I think that's all I had on that. Yes?
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you, Counselor. Over the last two weeks, I met with city staff, also met with county officials on a couple items. Last Friday, I attended the United Properties groundbreaking at Canterbury. This is a property on Fourth Avenue, which I call in the Big Bowl. They're obviously already prepping that. They're pretty excited about the marketplace here and for that building that will be put up, so good news for them. Also, today, I attended the Innovation Center Shakopee U, key leaders. It was hosted by St. Francis. Minnesota State Mankato was there with their president and their innovation director, and good overall discussion. People want to be involved in this, and there is some excitement, and, you know, our feasibility study is going to go out. I think once that document gets back, we were talking about going around and trying to get those partners fully on board, depending on the outcome of the feasibility study, but Mankato State can bring a lot to the table before this, and I really think it's a big piece of our future if we can do it for Scott County. So that was a great, great little meeting we had today. I also was going to bring up Saturday, if you have something to shred, bring it to the police station, 10 o'clock, free shredding, so a great opportunity to take care of those old documents. That's all I had. Counselor Whiting?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no liaison reports, but I did want to mention the orf is still collecting lawn clippings and things on Sundays, I believe. And that's through which months?
Yes, sir, that is throughout the month of September, and so you can...
September doesn't go into October yet?
Uh, I can find out. I know it's certainly, Steve, do you know? It's certainly the month of September.
We can certainly, we can certainly direct them to their website.
Definitely do that, but it's an opportunity for our citizens to drop off their lawn waste and things for free, so.
Just go, bring your ID. They'll get you right through. Throw it off the truck, and you're good to go.
Thank you. Counselor Contras?
Just one quick one on the 13th. I too attended the United Properties, the groundbreaking on Canterbury. Otherwise, that's it.
Excellent. Administration report, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing in addition from me, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Through October.
Through October, Sundays for our residents, free of charge.
Sundays, 8 to 2.
8 to 2. Thanks for that great information. Item number 11, other business. Other business before this board? Also then, we would move ahead to item number 12, and just a reminder that I know that it says October 1st, which will be our next full city council meeting, but we will adjourn to next Wednesday, September 25th, for our workshop on strategic planning, and I think that's a, is that a 7 o'clock start?
Yes, it is, sir.
So with that, if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion for next Wednesday, the 25th. Counselor Whiting?
I make a motion to adjourn to next Wednesday, October, September 25th, for our workshop.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for their discussion. Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. We adjourn at 9:02.
Thank you.